And I'm going to call the meeting to order. And the first thing, I'd like to pass on the meeting, the minutes of June 29th, July 27th of 2015. Are there any addendums you want to add to that?
I have a couple of questions. And I don't think, I don't know that we can answer them tonight. But if we look at June 29th, the second page under jurisdiction as reference to the Supreme Court, is it Supreme Court or Superior Court? Does anyone remember? I remembered Superior Court.
We can just clarify that, Larry. We have the case, you know which case which was referencing.
Okay. And that's something that can be adjusted and adjusted.
We can check that.
And the only other question I have for, no, I'm sorry. The next question I have for June 29th is on page three, the third paragraph that begins Mr. Calhoun. There's a sentence in there that I don't understand, and I think that needs clarification. It's a sentence that begins in either case, comma, the waiver had not been submitted. And Chris, if it's easier for you, I'll be happy to give you my copy of the minutes after I finish.
That would be great, and then we'll change them.
And then the final one is on the last page of those minutes. And this is really a nitpicky thing, but I have no idea where these minutes are going to end up in the future. The fifth line down, the word honor. So I'll push to you now.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, I had one on the June 29th minutes. On to page three, down where it starts, Attorney Natalie Burns, a little more than halfway down the page, where it says, however, she did not agree that the zoning board of appeals did not have jurisdiction oversight plan review. Unless I'm reading that, my understanding is that she felt we did not, and the double negative in there sounds like we do, she did not agree that we did not have jurisdiction oversight plan review. So if I'm reading that in.
I'll clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
I have it circled.
Okay.
Are there any other things you'd like to add? Okay. Do I hear someone give an approval for the, make a motion, we give an approval for the minutes of June 29th, 215, and July 27th, 215?
I move that the minutes of June 29th be accepted as corrected.
Okay. Second? All in favor? All right. And July 27th, are they all right?
I have some there also. Very top, the second page, I believe there's one or two words that may be missing from the first sentence, what is being appealed, dash. And once again, Chris, I'll give you my marked up ones. Again, nitpicking, but in the very middle of the page, the word driveway appears against, driveway, driveway, I think one needs to be eliminated. Third page, fourth paragraph down, I think there's a typo in the last sentence. Fourth page, there are a couple of questions. I'll just give these to you because they're my, fifth page, one. Seventh page, third paragraph at the bottom, we were discussing the Maxwell situation. Steve, you, I think you were involved in this.
Yeah.
It says bedrooms, and I wonder if it was bathrooms.
Where are we?
I think we were talking about bathrooms in the building, not bedrooms.
I think you're right.
If you ask, there was one bathroom for each bedroom.
Right. That's right.
That's all I have.
Do I hear a motion that we accept those from July 27th, too?
To accept the minutes of July 27th as amended.
Do I have a second?
Seven.
All in favor? All right, all are in favor. Okay. Now, the next thing, we go to number three, public hearing, Mark and Bonnie Searls, 12 Autumn Way, rural zone, front setback reduction from 40 feet to 38 feet. For those that are not here, they wrote a short letter, and it won't take long, and I'll just read it. Then our house at 12 Autumn Lane, a private road was constructed in 2005 with an approved survey completed by Survey Works Incorporated and approved by the town with a setback of 40 feet. Under the notes of that survey, it states, this bill, the building depicted did conform with municipal setback requirements of local zoning at time of construction. On 7/15/2015, a new survey was completed by Livingston Hughes for the mortgage company of our potential buyer. This new survey indicated that the house has a 38 setback and does not meet the required 40-foot setback. We are unable to sell our house to these potential buyers due to this two-foot differential, and we are requesting a variance of two feet to allow our home to be sold with a clear title. And I would like to ask first, is the Searls, are the Searls here? Were they, the Searls? They're the sellers. Are the buyers here? They're not here. I think this is pretty self-explanatory. Is there anybody that agrees with, has an objection to making the setback from 40 feet to 38 feet here in the audiences? Anyone have an objection to it? And is there anybody in favor of it? The Searls. The next, I turn it over. Do any members of the board, we all were on the sidewalk on Saturday morning, do any members of the board have any questions they would like to raise?
Should we let them address? Folks?
We can. Are you going to say any more than what you said in the letter?
No, we're all set to close. The buyer's point of plan that the mortgage company needs to clean titles.
Yeah, that's why I read the letter, was trying to enter the point. If you want to say something, go ahead. No, I think everything's been said.
One thing I would like to clarify is they're not actually looking to get a variance. They're looking to get a setback reduction. In a setback reduction, they're not required to meet the five conditions of hardship. So with that said, you guys can proceed.
They are asking for a setback. Does any members of the board have any questions or any issues they want to raise? Do I hear a motion that we give them the two-foot setback reduction from 40 feet to 38 feet?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
We have discussion first.
You want a discussion?
Well, I think it would be important for the minutes to show that one of the reasons that we're in favor is because it's a curb street, it's not a busy, heavily traveled street, and I don't think it's going to be any type of interference for any neighbors. It seems fairly straightforward to me, so.
Do we have a vote?
I'm happy to vote now.
Okay. All in favor? Four, it's been approved, you're free to go.
And take your two feet with you.
Do we get this in writing?
You'll get a notice of action within a week.
We'll get it to you by Friday.
Probably tomorrow.
Okay. Who wants to pick it up tomorrow?
We'll do the best we can.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have an email we can send it to? Why don't you write that down?
Be sure to get that. Seriously. Actually, if I can take him out of his own board of previous, I never got the letter to get it recorded. I didn't issue it.
The next business that we have to consideration is 4A. And this is a continuation of the third or fourth meeting we've had on this park and ride situation down at Raymond Cape. And consideration of a draft procedural order for David Callen, Esquire, and others, Quarry, Cove Road, Cape Road, Ferry Landing Road, recent, and appeal from the planning board's decision to the town of Fry Island. Major site plan and shoreline zoning applications for the proposed Fry Island Park and Ride facilities. And we have, first of all, let me tell you, the public, on the September 28th will be the time when the public can get up and speak, see? Until then, we'll just keep it amongst ourselves up here. And what we are doing here is we have agreed on which, first, let me read you this. What is the decision being appealed? By a vote of three to one, the zoning board of appeals adopted a motion to table the issue raised by applicants as to whether the planning board decision must be reversed because the proposed parking lot is not a permitted use in the shoreline zone since the parking lot driveway entrance is not within 300 feet of the lot contained, containing associated ferry use. The zoning board of appeals determines that this issue will be argued, discussed, and decided in the larger context of the hearing on the appeal, and so declines to address it at this time. We did address the other things that had been raised, so that I can, for people that haven't been here before, we have the 25-acre parking lot, and it, part of it is down on the Raymond Cape Road, and the other is the Quarry Road. And so you have a lot where you can go up and go into the proposed parking lot, you can walk down to the ferry landing, and also in the walking, if there's an emergency, you can drive cars back and forth on that way. And the issue is at hand is what is the primary entrance to the parking lot? If it is down on the Raymond Cape Road, it is within 300 feet of the dock and is permissible. If the main entrance is up farther on Quarry Road, it is farther than 300 feet from the dock, and so that would not be permissible. So that's what we're discussing here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, I think what we need to do, we have, the procedural order of what we agreed to at the last meeting was put together by Attorney Katz of Diego, and then edits remained by various other attorneys. And if I understand correctly, everything has been agreed to with the exception of section F, number four, another procedural order. So I just want to make sure I'm accurate, but I believe that's the only point I can pension it to date.
That's my understanding, that is whether it's three, whether the main entrance is 300 feet, within 300 feet of the dock, or the main entrance is farther than 300 feet of the dock.
I think, Larry, I think that comes out in, that will come out in our review. I don't think we're going to have anything to do with that tonight. There has to be testimony.
All right.
And that'll come from the public discussion in a meeting of September 28th. I think the only thing we have to decide tonight that has not been already decided, as Joanne pointed out, is on this last page, F4, whether there is sufficient evidence that the park and ride is safe.
All right.
Do we have the authority to review that?
And if I may, maybe to make this easier, and to make sure we're all on the same page here, I want to make sure we all have the same procedural order that we're looking at as well. So under F, issues raised on appeal.
Yes.
I just want to make sure what's been agreed to, number one, you guys tell me if this is what you showed, this has been agreed to, whether the land use ordinance permits the planning board or the ZVA to waive any provisions of the land use ordinance or the shoreline zoning ordinance provisions related to the park and ride.
Yes.
That's the first edit?
That's, I think everyone agrees to that.
Everyone agrees to that, okay. I just want to make sure we're following the same yet. Two, whether the park and ride violates the shoreline zoning ordinance because the central line of its driveway entrance is more than 300 feet from the Fry Island Ferry driveway entrance.
Yes.
Three, whether there is sufficient evidence that the park and ride is adequately sized. And four, we have one option is whether there is sufficient evidence that the park and ride is safe. The other option that was in the original procedural order is whether there is sufficient evidence that the design requiring the pedestrians cross Cape Road is safe. Is that, do you guys also agree that those are two options with four?
Yes.
Okay, that we're looking at the same one?
I agree.
Yeah, I think, the way I understand it, there's a disagreement among the attorneys. One attorney feels that the only question about safety is at the cross, and the other attorneys are saying that they believe that we should assess the safety of the park and ride project.
Of the project, yeah.
The entire, the entire project. Is it, is it the way you see it?
I understood that, let me see if I got this correct, that three of them agreed that we were looking at the cross, the pedestrian cross.
Three of them at the cross?
And just Callen's, Attorney Callen wanted a change to that the park and ride is safe. That was my understanding. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I read. Mr. Chairman, can we open it up for our own discussion?
Yes, of course, yes.
My, just if I, I'll say my feeling on this, what I understood from the last meeting specifically was that the last two portions were whether the parking lot was adequately sized and whether the pedestrian crosswalk was safe, not that the whole project was safe. That's what was in the minutes, which I understood to be correct on. That's what I had written down as us agreeing to.
I think we can copy the minutes back.
On the minutes of July 27th, find, let's see the page numbers.
They're not covered.
Under what is being appealed?
Yep. Is it page one? Oh, at the bottom there, I've got it. Page five.
Oh, yeah.
Here with them. Page, is it?
One, two, three, four, five, I think.
Six?
Which one?
Yeah, right here. It says motion, Steve Warshaw, move to limit denova review to the original items listed in the May 6 application, of which, again, the numbers three and four were whether the parking area was adequately sized, and number four, pedestrian safety.
Right.
That's what was passed.
Then that would be three and four here.
Yes, and pedestrian safety has been expanded into an issue.
Right.
Yes.
My concern is to change that to is the park and ride is safe is a completely different level of what we agreed to review.
Does anybody know what the amount of traffic is on the Raymond Cape Road?
I don't think we can get into public.
Yeah, we can.
No, we can't.
Oh, well.
I was asking you, right.
Yep. May I make a motion?
Yes.
Point of information?
I don't believe we can.
No, we can't.
You're not deceived.
I was asking the board. I was asking members of the board.
Point of information of the DOT.
Sir, we can't tonight.
No.
Thank you, though.
No, I'm asking from the board. The board has a conversation.
I move to accept the procedural order. We had one through three agreed to, and number four, that most of the attorneys agreed to, and was on the original procedural order of Jim Katz of Figus, of whether there is sufficient evidence that the design requiring that pedestrians cross Cape Road is safe.
I think I want to second that, but I want to be sure I know what I'm seconding.
Yeah.
Your motion is that this is the one we use.
For number four, yes.
Yes, I second that motion.
That this is the one we use, the current one? Whether the sufficient evidence or the previous one?
No, the previous.
Previous one?
That the pedestrian cross.
That limits it to the crossing.
Yeah, limit it to the crossing, the pedestrian cross.
Joanne, would that be the one dated August 17th, 2015?
That would be correct, thank you. Thank you very much.
And that would be as is?
Yes. Everything else was agreed to, that was the only question amongst all the attorneys.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
You have a motion, second.
Second. Then we vote on the motion. All in favor? Motion is carried.
My understanding, Mr. Chairman, that's all we had to decide to complete the procedural.
And I thank you very much. And we'll see you at the next meeting.
And, yeah, we'll sign it.
Have a happy rest of the summer.
We have to sign.
I think Larry, well, it has to be corrected.
Yeah, this needs to be corrected, based on what we just voted on.
Yeah.
Then there needs to be a motion by someone on the board and to second an approval that Larry signed it.
Oh.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead, Eldon.
And just, yeah, to clarify, because what we have is, we have one procedural order that has the first three correct, and we have one that has the number four correct. We need them all in one procedural order, if I understand, looking at it that way. Well, the problem is they're all dated August 17th at the bottom. We had one from Attorney Callen that had all the edits with one through three corrected.
Minor revision. I think this is the correct one.
The other one, the fourth, Chris?
It's these three, and then not number four, this number four that's in the original.
This is what we want.
Is this a clean copy?
But are the first three correct? See, that was my problem, we had different, the original had one through three.
Are these page numbers the same? No. Okay.
And then one through three were edited by everyone, if I understood correctly on this one.
I don't want to make a motion. We have page numbers at the bottom.
Yeah.
So the motion will be fully approved. The procedure is completed with this page number, with the exception that F4 is changed to read to this page number.
So this is the correct, this is the one that says park and ride number one versus independent parking facility?
Which I have left, that's that one.
These three are correct.
And it's just this one that's the interest.
Maybe I should use that and then cross that.
Okay.
Sign that one.
There, so that does conclude the.
Hang on.
Yeah.
I think they still, you still have to probably all look at that before you sign it.
Yeah.
Might make sense for all this to initial it in margin.
Yeah.
Much more data in margin.
And I apologize, this is where I was getting confused with the number four.
I can see why.
As to which was the latest edit.
I suggested before, before we make the motion and approve it, before Larry signs it, I think call three of us to initial and date.
That sounds great.
Okay.
Want to make a motion?
Yeah, I can issue.
Okay, to add this?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we.
To amend.
Yeah, amend the procedural order. That had all the appropriate edits on it with the change of section F, number four, to read whether there is sufficient, sufficient evidence that the design requiring the pedestrians cross Cape Road is safe.
All in favor? Carried.
I think as Eldon mentioned, we can all sign on this to be amended and date, just our initials or do any?
I think initials is fine.
Okay. So it is. I want to sign this one.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Okay, and this is down here, your writing is better than mine. You should put your initials, make the motion, your initials. And then we're going to have to sign.
Second, two seconds up.
I did.
So that would conclude our hearing on the continuing saga of the parking lot. Thank you very much. Then the next thing, big, Christopher Nagel was the lawyer for Scott and Jane Maxwell, who had the lot they were trying to combine, and they took and, they withdrew that appeal. So that is history. And number five, are there any board communications? And number five, are there any board communications?
I have one thing that I would like to ask the board for, and it's permission to attend the September 28th meeting via Skype. I'm going to be out of state.
I, I, I'd like to, I move to approve that he attend the meeting by Skype.
Second.
All in favor?
We'll make sure you are set up for that.
Awesome.
Nice work to Dominic, we're going to be, I'm going to bring in like a few, I just got to make sure.
Yeah, we'll just do it ahead, ahead of the meeting, have it running before we start.
Just make, I just need to make, make sure I have access to it.
When is the next meeting?
The next meeting will be September 28th.
So not August, good, September 28th.
It will not be an August 31st meeting.
Good.
The next meeting will be September 28th.
On a month, yeah, I'll be here because Freiburg Fiat doesn't start until October 6th, I'll be here. Do we have any, number six, any, any meetings, any, any communications from the code enforcement officer, any comments?
No.
No. Do I hear a motion for the adjournment?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Meeting is adjourned.